Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 9th meeting minutes. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You say, you say any opposed.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Any corrections on the minutes that you noticed?
So now you can go public comment.
Okay, so going around the public comment, Kevin, do you have anything?
Public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, so you want to do, this is Jill and Matt in the blue and the yellow.
Okay, Jill and Matt, would you, do you have a comment today for us?
Yeah, we're, we're here representing the Strawberry Festival.
Oh, okay.
You're the entertainment committee for the Strawberry Festival.
The entertainment?
Entertainment committee.
Entertainment committee. And last year we bought that big triangle sun shade that we, that was a big hit, worked great and everything else. Um, over the fall, we bought another one, so we had a big square, pretty much. That's what we're going to have. We, uh, but we're trying to come up with a more permanent, uh, or more solution to hang it from, or you know, to hang it from. Um, we're going to talk to the guy that owns the grocery store and talk to Duke. There's a pole in front of the firehouse, there's an electrical pole in front of the firehouse and the pole at the store that we can tie off to on two corners. And we, we're, the reason why they're here is because we're looking to dig a couple holes and put a couple holes up, like one in front of the post office-ish and one like on the corner of the 1900 building. So we didn't know if it was an easement that you guys had that we need to worry about, if we need to talk to the property owners, or how we need to go about doing that.
So you're not wanting to do a hole in the sidewalk anymore?
No, I tripped.
That was never his plan.
That was not my plan.
Okay, well, I, as I, I stepped down from the Strawberry Festival Committee this year, just because I'm really busy and they had talked last year about trying to drill some holes in the sidewalk for those and whatnot. Um, I guess if you're, if it's, I don't think we really have a right of way. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not wanting it where people park, you're wanting it closer to the buildings itself.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be outside of the, between the buildings and the sidewalk, kind of, you know, like the post office did, but between the building and the sidewalk, kind of, is what we're thinking about.
So it's that big, it's going to go from that?
Yeah, it's 48 feet, it'll be 48 feet square now, so yeah.
Wow.
It's going to be bigger.
So you think two poles will hold it?
I think four poles will.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Oh, you're wanting to?
Yeah, because it'll be a square this time, so we'll need four poles. We can tie off the two center ones to the same pole and then just have two outside corners towards the firehouse and towards the grocery store.
I don't know if anybody paid attention last year to how they did it. They had the giant water tanks from Shop Myers and they had the metal poles attached to those. And, I mean, it worked.
It worked and we could improve upon it, but we'd rather just make a permanent solution and be done with it.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was a little unsightly and at the end of the day, moving around was kind of tough, so.
So the poles are not going to block the drive into the parking lot, right?
That would be something we have to look at. We're just, we're just throwing around the idea of what we can do right now and we didn't know who we needed to go to for placing the poles to begin with.
It sounds like you're going to have to go to the property owners and stuff.
At least on the post office one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The post office one, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, any of it would have to deal with property owners. We can just.
I didn't know if there was certain footage for like putting signs up and poles that you guys had to put up?
Well, since it's all, it's all concrete there. I doubt if that one, you know, and parking, so. Yeah, and it can't block the sidewalks.
Good luck with the post office pole.
Yeah, I was going to say. But you might be able to.
I was going to say, I was going to say the apartment owners, if you end up closer to the apartments, I can get you contact for them, if you let me know. I have their number and stuff.
Could you actually put something, I mean, those buildings are brick and it's hard for you.
I mean, that'd be kind of putting a lot of liability on the property owners, you know. If it's our post, you know, if it's just a post, then.
Well, anyway you do, I mean, if you put a post on their property, it's going to be their liability and then.
And that, you know, it's the 1900, I mean, I don't know where the property line is on that or the post office.
Like I said, we're just starting with you guys to see what we need to do, go from there, so.
So, and then there's that pole, are you talking about the pole that's already leaning?
I don't know. I'd have to look at it.
I know, I know what Duke pole you're talking about that is leaning. I do know which one you're, yeah.
I think there's a lot of service on that pole already.
And now we have to contact them and talk to them. You guys are just first up.
JT's lot would probably be.
A portion of it where we would put it, if it's a property thing, so.
No, I meant just the corner.
Right, the corner of, that's probably a little far away.
Well, ran across from that.
Yeah.
How far, so how close, 48 feet, where's that going to end up at?
It's about the width of the road. We were in the road a little bit and on the sidewalk last year with it, so it'll probably be about the width of the road, but we'll center it however we need to, you know, kind of thing.
So how far south is it?
It will probably be, I would say it'd be about the middle of the post office drive or so, something like that. About how far that, go to that direction, so.
Well, they'll, yeah, they'll.
Yeah, I don't think we can help you there.
Right.
Sorry. Did you have, did you want, while you're here, to go ahead and ask the road to be closed off for those?
Oh, that's not my department.
Well, it's close enough.
I'm sorry, what was your name? Matt.
Matt, Jill and Matt?
Yep.
Kim, you're next.
Oh, you guys, I'm really, really upset. I'm telling you, down my road, it looks like trash. It looks so dumpy. It is disgusting. There's been older people, when I moved in, those older people kept that house up all the way. We got younger generations.
Is that the house?
So where do you live? I don't know where you live.
I was going to say, you know where Kim lives.
Yeah, so we're, what are we talking here about?
Right down the road here from the tavern, where the privacy fence is.
West Street.
Cute little place. I almost hit your little dog running in the trash the other day.
It's just, I mean, with people that has trash, well, it's been a month and they keep sticking trash out there. Well, pay your damn bill. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cuss, but it's infuriating and then just keep adding trash. And I took pictures behind me, you go to my backyard, there's people over here that lets their dogs get in their trash. It's blowing in my yard. Then you got across the street, you look out the window, you sit on your front porch, there's trash all over there. I mean, something's got to be done in Rosedale. It is looking, sorry, no offense, but westy. I mean, it's getting bad.
Yeah, I think that you, I think you are the brunt of it right now, Kim. I feel like that's like, yes, right where you're at.
It is disgusting.
We strive to keep our yard looking nice every summer and with that.
I'm not saying we have the perfect house, but we keep our yard up.
Not to mention, there's a house, the house to the south is real bad. And they actually have thrown out a refrigerator on the other side in between the houses. And that's a safety concern right there. If a little kid gets in there and closes the door, you know.
I agree.
And I think they have cars sitting out there. Last time I seen it, there's a trailer with stuff piled up.
Trailer, they were out there the other day working, cleaning that porch area off, throwing the trash on the trailer.
Oh yeah, I see it.
Because I heard by the, they were actually cleaning. They got rid of the one pickup that I told them I was going to tag.
I think you're talking about the blue house.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but you're also talking about the house across the street.
Yeah, the three.
She's talking about, um.
Where's the refrigerator?
So you've got Antrum's on the corner, this one.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about. I know who you're talking about.
I was just, I found it by the yesterday pile.
The house to the south, that email you gave me, no response. Phone number I had, just come.
Yeah.
I have no contact information for her anymore.
Well, tag that car.
So, start knocking on doors, yeah.
What about the boat?
Yeah, I don't know about the boat. I don't know what the status of the boat is.
Can't do much about boats if they're on a trailer.
Why couldn't they just at least put it in their backyard?
That's what I said.
You know what?
It's an eyesore.
That's, I think that's part of the mobile home ordinance. Let me just.
Not noticing to move it to their backyard.
Well, we've all been concerned about it.
It is awful. It is really bad.
Yeah, well, I mean.
That's part of the problem.
We can.
I thought we updated that ordinance. I thought you.
Talk to them about trash in their yard.
I talked to people about, till I'm blue in the face about trash in their yard. And you know what they tell me? They tell me what they want me to hear when I'm there talking to them. Oh yeah, we're going to work on it. Yeah, we're going to take care of it.
Well, the one across from them, I drove down yesterday.
If you can't do anything about it now, then we need to put a town ordinance and that gives them a right to talk about it.
Your little tiny dog was over there. I almost got him a little way around.
I did, well, matter of fact, me and the animal putting up a chain link fence in the back. We was going to do a privacy fence until we seen the prize and then we said, oh, chain link fence.
Chain link fence, okay. But she's too cute, she's too cute to be lost over there in the trash. You never know.
Well, you know, it's hearing.
All four.
Five. There's five.
There's five?
Oh yeah, we got five little rug rats.
No, well, the houses, the houses he was talking about, houses.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant my dogs.
No, all four houses.
Oh, they're awful.
And they're all on the east side of West Street.
Yeah, they're awful.
I guess, I just get tired of picking up the trash. And the thing about it is, the house to the south, you don't even see nobody. I've never seen nobody there.
And they don't mow grass. They didn't mow it because I kept mowing more further over.
Hopefully they'd get to.
They didn't. No, it's bad.
Is this the blue one you're talking about?
The bad thing about it is that ten years, we're going to end up with rats.
Or cockroaches. Are they going to pay my bill? My exterminator, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's terrible. And see, I've lived here 33 years, never been in here, never complained, so.
You've been in here.
I've been here, paid my bill.
Yeah, you were in here when you got locked out. How?
Yes, that was Carol's. What happened to Carol's? I said, I left my phone in her house.
Yeah. Um, no, I, I think it looks terrible too, Kim. I don't like it.
No, it's awful.
It's to the point where we don't even lift our shades anymore.
It's awful.
You open it up and there it is, you know.
Yeah, well, when we have cleanup day, sometimes that takes care of a lot of that, but.
They don't care though. I mean, the younger generation is lazy. They are.
She said it, so I didn't have to.
They are, I hate to say it, but they, they're awful.
I mean, but how much effort does it take?
They don't mow. I mean, I think I seen one lady over there mow his, or weed eat her yard, or the weed eater. We even stepped out free lawnmowers out in the road. Do you think they'd touch on?
Good try. I, I mowed my neighbor's yard for, across the street for a couple of years.
Because I didn't mow.
Looking at it.
Well, that's awful. I thought.
And then after I had a couple of flat tires, I decided not to do it.
So what we can we do for her, anything?
Well, Natalie's checking this.
I'm checking this ordinance, but I'm also texting Scott really fast.
Okay.
I don't think with our ordinance, if I remember correctly, there's no provisions on the yards and stuff for us to cite on a town ordinance, like there is with the chicken thing. There's a provision in there and it states what the fines are and what they can be. It has to be written in the ordinance, the fines are X number and X number this. It has to be written in there. And I don't think it is, because we've always went down the path that I go talk to them once or twice and I send them a letter and then if that don't work, we send the affidavit out and if that don't work, then it goes to Scott.
Scott's the lawyer if we have town.
Our attorney.
I know.
Yeah, well, that's what he's saying, that's who Scott, yeah. So it's going to go to Scott after those steps, but you have to take so many steps.
The people in the house to the south of them, I've talked to.
The one in the blue?
Yeah, the young man that lives there and I've talked to the young girl that works there, lives there. And I tried to reach out to the homeowner, which is his mother.
Yeah.
And I, and the phone number I had for is no good anymore. I sent her an email because Natalie had an email for her. I got zero response out of that.
Well, thank you for trying.
Well, that's the, as much as I like my job, that's the aggravating part of the job is to go to somebody's house and say, please clean up your yard. I mean, that's probably the worst part of the job, is telling people to take care of your animals and clean up your yard. You know, you shouldn't have to tell grown adults to do that.
I'd understand it if they were elderly people, we'd mow the grass.
Right.
But these are young people, they're.
I think the boy that lives there is 19 and the girl's like 17. They're young.
And they've just had a child or will be having a child?
Uh, I think she's had it already. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think so too.
And the last time I talked to her, he had just gotten a job in Montezuma, I think, at the, at the sawmill or something. I know he was working nights. But I did see her out cleaning the other day. She was out there behind the, in the back porch area. Now, what they're going to do with everything after they get it thrown on that trailer, who knows?
That is just going to sit there?
Who knows how long that trailer is going to sit there?
For the dogs to drag off.
And the car is like sitting there with a window out.
Yeah, that car, I'll, I'll deal with that this weekend.
Okay, this weekend you'll deal with it, then.
I'll see you on Friday.
Okay, well, why don't we, we'll see what we can do. I mean, if we need to change ordinance to do something or we could send them a letter, we, can we try to get an address for the homeowner?
Um, I don't know if her address is on.
I, you know what, I'm going to be really honest. I believe that she had a house fire at one point in time. I'm not 100% sure where they're living now. She bought that as an investment property, is my understanding.
She got a little money.
Then she, I don't know, I don't think that her initial tenants were, it wasn't her son, but I know he is the one there now.
Right.
Um, I've had so many complaints on that in this office. Um, the dogs, the trash, I mean, it is the, one of the first things you see when you come down the hill is that house and it is so unsightly. So many people have stepped in and said things about it. And clearly, he does, the, clearly the son does not care, so.
Now, have you talked to the other three?
When can the town step in and clean it up?
These over here, not recently.
We can clean it up after we have exhausted all efforts. And if we clean it up, then we can lean on their property taxes. So that's a last resort, because we don't really have the resources. You're paying staff, you're paying dumpster fees, um, that kind of stuff to actually clean those properties up, which is why we offer Cleanup Day as an opportunity for people to get rid of stuff like that.
Probably the quickest thing to do would be Friday. I'll type up an affidavit and I will make all efforts to hand deliver it instead of mailing it.
Right, because I don't know where anyone is at this point.
Well, right, I'll hand deliver it to one of those two that live there. We'll give them 10 days.
And tag the car.
As per the, the affidavit. And then after that, you know.
10 days to clean up the property, but we don't need 10 days on the car.
No, it's got to have 72 hours on the car.
Right.
Can you have something, them sign something that they received, the letter?
It's called a body cam.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I do believe that the garbage over here that you're talking about, Kim, is also out of control. Um, I know that.
That bub, bub's old house?
Bub's old house, he was piling in the back of the truck for a while.
And taking it down to Jamie's and then Jamie put a lock on his.
Right. Um, and I, I know that, I called him one day and said, the trash in the back of the truck has to go. You need to get rid of it. And he did. I, I don't know what he did with it, which is a little.
It went to Jamie. Poor Jamie. Because that's when he put a lock on it.
Right.
And, because I used to put it down there and I used to just pay Jamie.
Right.
And then he put a lock and he said, if I wanted a key, but I thought, if I forget and then somebody throws a bunch of stuff and I don't want to be reliable, so we just went the other way and got home.
But, um, I also feel like, uh, Antrum's on the corner is starting to get bad again. It felt like it got a little bit better.
It did, it did.
And then it's starting to get bad again too.
The front corner of their house got better, but like the back half has always been disgusting. It's like, they kind of picked up the one half and just like moved all their trash into this one section. And I was like.
And then the other house that is the closest to the tavern, um, I have found it, if they have, if we have problems with the tenants in that house, that typically a call to Berkshire Hathaway, the property management company on that, will take care of that.
The two, the two-story?
I've done that two-story.
Yeah, the two-story.
There's one more between the two-story and then Jamie, and then the bar.
Right, so you've got Antrum's.
The two-story.
The two-story.
There's two, two stories.
And then there's one more.
And then.
Oh yeah, okay, so yours is right, yeah. Then yours is fine.
Do you have issues with the one closest to the tavern?
No.
No, no, she's fine. But I, yes, I meant the tall house.
Well, I already text her. I was like, hey, we just have to complain about all the houses along your street. Your stuff better not be in your yard.
And I think the tall house isn't too bad right now. I don't think they're doing too bad. Last year they had a lot of issues mowing that backyard.
And the other one too, about mowing it.
They didn't mow at all, so.
Let's not forget the south end.
Well, I think both of the, you're talking about, both of the ones there in the center have a bunch of trash.
Mike was talking about that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I mean, is this where we need to.
Yeah, there's a couple of properties on Lowell's Lane.
Well, yeah, he just needs to hand out an affidavit, so.
You're going to hand it.
Two tall houses and then the end house and the blue house.
I think the tall house is fine.
Kevin, you're going to hand affidavits to all of them?
Both of the two, they're the ones with all the trash and like a stack of windows.
Are you handing affidavits to all of them or just the one? Well, the main one was the south one, because I've talked to him several times. Yeah, that's what I was saying, but maybe talk to.
And if we could just get rid of that boat, that just looks like.
Bub's old house, I haven't talked to them because they kind of mellowed out. We haven't had any issues with them lately. But I can go talk to them. That house in the two-story, we'll just issue them letters and see if that does anything. And if it don't, then they'll get an affidavit. But the one to the south, they'll definitely get a letter Friday. Or not a letter, but an affidavit.
Thank you.
And the Lowell Lane house, a little, you know.
I think we've already sent them an affidavit.
Right. Um, about that truck.
I haven't sent them any certified mail that I remember. I don't.
That truck hasn't moved. We need to do something about that.
Yeah, that truck.
They've got multiple vehicles that are lined all over the place.
Where at?
Down by Ion and Jerry's on the corner.
Oak Street, Cochran's.
Oh yeah, my Cochran's, that place is bad.
That place is a mess.
Yes, your buddy Mike.
This one is down by Jerry and Ion's.
I mean, we could talk about this all night.
I tried, I tried to read your water, but it came probably because of cars all around the road. I mean, here just one car right after another. Out in the front yard, everywhere. It's not a car.
Does he have like a body shop in there or what's he?
Well, the way I heard it was closed down. Alan's not doing it.
That's what I heard too.
So if that's the case.
That's a drug house. No, I don't know. I'm just kidding.
Please, please.
Yes, we did send a certified letter on Lowell's Lane in October. We sent a certified letter on Central Street, um, also in October. That's the house of the chickens, so.
So you're talking an affidavit and lettering this weekend, this Friday, right? Okay.
Will that state on there that if it continues, we'd be forced to clean it up ourselves and put a lien on their property?
Yeah, I can add a letter in there that if something's not done within 10 days of town, we'll take, the towns will make arrangements and all charges can be put as a lien against the home.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
That becomes Scott's issue after that.
I didn't want to be bad, bad news, but I'm sorry. I just.
No, you know what, that's what it takes.
I'm driving by.
Kim, literally, the reason I joined the board was because of all the trash along that road.
It is, it's just awful. I mean, not saying I'm old, but you know, he is, but no, I'm just kidding, Bill. I'm just teasing. He's living in Big Six O's, you have to get aggressive.
It's gotten really bad this winter.
It has, it has, and it's getting, it just seems like it's getting worse and it's like.
And where's that?
And when we're out there busting our butt and they're sitting by that little fire pit and I'm like, okay, you're younger than us, get up and do something.
Throw some of that trash in that fire.
I know. It's like, ah.
Okay.
Well.
Mike, did you have any public comment?
I walk on the trail, I say it.
I just, the car was. The car's down the road.
Okay, so.
We've talked about it.
Started on all business.
There's older kids now at the park, they were kicking the trash cans. They ain't doing that no more.
What?
There's some older kids earlier, they were down there kicking the trash can on the ground, trash going all over. They're not doing that no more.
Did you get on them?
They picked it all up. I knew they were.
Right, is that all you got for public comment?
I think that's it.
So. All business.
Kids don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. Don't feel obligated if you can.
We're going to leave this. We aren't even in town, so we don't care what happens.
But you're still coming Rosedale.
Thank you guys. See you later. Good to see you.
So it's okay for us to go too?
Yes, you guys.
Sorry, I came in, complained and then I leave.
You have to stay, he can go.
He's got to go to work, so I have to make his lunch, so yeah, I have to go.
We can't get out.
All right. Sorry guys and thanks for listening.
Well, we're, we're working on it.
We have talked about it before.
I know, and I hate to, you know, I never complain like always, but I do to poor Natalie. She gets the butt in.
Well, it used to be when you called somebody out, they would be embarrassed and do something, but it don't work that way anymore.
I just don't understand. I mean, the younger generation, I mean, like I said, when I first moved in, there was all older people. They kept their house up nice. Even got out there mowing everything. And then this younger generation, I just don't understand them. It's like, do you not care? I mean, that's what I don't understand.
That's, that's it. They, you hit the mill head. They don't care. They're lazy and they don't care. And it's a rental. And they're, yeah, it's not there, so they don't, they don't care even that much more.
Yeah, but I mean, have pride in yourself. I mean, I just.
Well, they don't care. That's the problem, they don't care.
All right, thank y'all.
Bye guys.
Hey Natalie. Can you do a? Can you do a?
Do what?
Generic. Quote the ordinance.
I know, something, get going.
From the Desgus thing, we haven't done one of them for a while. And address, address yard cleanliness and trash.
Yeah.
And then, we need to take those other ordinances from that one town and we need to revisit ours and put in there that we can find them, cause I have new ordinance books. And we can write them. Because I'm pretty sure in the, in the housing ordinance, there's no provision in there for a fine of any cor- any kind.
No, I don't know, I have to look, I was just looking at it, but.
If you're writing ordinance, does it have to be passed like the next month?
Yeah, that's all on you guys. I have nothing to do with passing ordinances, I enforce them.
Okay, so, you know, then that, it'll leave you like two more months before we can get it done, so you're gonna have to get it done.
No, special council meetings.
If we look at them and we get it rewritten the way the town likes it, I would say Scott probably, I should review it.
Yes.
And then you can approve it at a special meeting or wait till the following month, so you can wait till March and get approved. I mean, it does, doesn't have to be voted on three times in three different months or none of that, it's just.
You can approve them in one night if you vote this as the rule.
Yeah, once Scott, once it's rewritten, we get it typed up, Scott approves it and looks at it, and he's good with it, then all you guys have to do is approve it.
Do an old business?
Yes, you're an old business.
So is the old business the stormwater?
Um, that's kinda ongoing business, so yeah. You can talk about that, you can do this as part of that, cause you guys need to approve that.
Well, they started our stormwater, yeah, well, yesterday. And I told them they could park the thing there on the railroad grade, but okay.
Yeah, I told them to put all the, the pipe there. I mean, yeah, I, like, I felt like that was kinda out of the way versus them trying to load it and offload it off of Main Street by the water plant and stuff, I thought that would be a little bit better. So. Um, Ken, are Jessica and David, they're doing okay down there? Okay.
Are they gonna take that tree out that's on the?
I don't, I don't know, are they gonna?
Which one, on my gables?
Huh?
Which one we're talking about?
Well, you know, where the stormwater project's starting right on.
Is that thing that has name back in that trailer?
Yes, line, yeah.
I mean, he's chopped it down himself.
That's Kevin.
Oh, Kevin's been there?
They are taking that dirt, they already, the big, big tree you're talking about, in the very back, they trimmed it, they haven't knocked it all the way down yet.
Okay, but they're going through.
Taking the dirt, or Kevin asked them if they would leave it, and they said they would even do better than that, they were gonna spread and level all that out.
Okay.
Cover all that over.
I, I saw that, that Kevin, and that's a good idea there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Seen that pile of eggs, a lot of dirt.
Yeah, and I asked for some.
There'd be a lot of field dirt, so if anybody else has any.
When they get down there, the town needs it.
Do you want, do you need some out of the cemetery?
This I don't want because they're in that driveway and it's got a lot of rock in it and everything. When they get down like behind the, coming towards the church and behind, Fisher used to live that through there. That'll be some really good dirt. We liked, and I told them I liked to have some of that.
Okay, sounds good.
Or the town wants it.
Anybody have any questions about the stormwater or? I'm just hoping that takes care of my, or getting issues. Okay, we have, um.
Pay application number one from B and T for approval. Um, it's mostly for the materials that have been delivered. The total amount is.
Hundred and two, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty, and thirty-four cents.
HWC doesn't recommend approval of this pay app, that everything is signed off on their end. So you guys just need to make a motion to approve, and then all of this is sent to, um, Chrissy Daryl, and then she has them, they, Derek Rush from Bank of New York actually writes a check to B and T and it's all drawn out of the project budget. Out of the, it has a drawdown, like it draws out of the grant. Certain things draw out of the loan portion, certain things have drawn out of the local match, so.
I don't recall. What number you just said there, but I'm gonna, I'll make a motion to pay that amount.
Pay app number one.
Yeah, it's really, it's already, we've already paid for it all, it's just now releasing the funds.
Ken, Kurt, Josh, is the first.
I'll make a motion second.
Cody is the second.
New bills.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
So all you have to do, Carol, is sign, there's like a couple copies stuck together, so you're looking at like a lot of papers. All you need to do is sign right here.
Right there, oh, owner?
Owner, you are the owner. That was an all in favor vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any nays?
Green and red paddles, hold up. Green and red paddles, hold up.
Yep. Um, you can do community crossings in old business.
Oh, okay, is that this?
No, that's, no, just our road project.
There's our community crossings.
Um, no, we just, we can just talk about the update. There, just, so on the community crossings project. For the update, um, I don't think everyone is on the email. I know that, I was on the email, Ken's on the email, um, the contractor did request payment. We were not wanting to pay, um, they did request payment. They had a long reason as to why they wanted payment, that, uh, they said they were coming back, they said they were gonna do all these things, we're holding their bond, we're holding all these things, um. Eric Smith stopped by to talk to me from HWC and he said he felt it would be in the town's best interest to make that payment. He said that he is confident that we will end up with a good road, even if we have to pull their performance bond to get one. He said that he and Scott Craig have pulled a bond on a contractor before. And they did win and get the project completed for that contractor, not with this contractor that we're working with, different situation, but that they have done it before, that they, um, and then, I talked with Lynx, with you about it, I talked to Ken about it, and then Ken also talked to Eric. Um, and so with the go-ahead of you two, I went ahead and cut them a check.
Okay.
We did hold five percent retainage, which is, you know, like eight thousand dollars or something, not very much. Um, they received the check, they've cashed the check, so now we wait.
Okay, and they're talking April first, wasn't it?
They were talking about coming and meeting with us in March.
Okay.
To come up with a plan on remedying the situation. They would not put a plan in writing, which was Ken.
That's what we were concerned about, yeah, definitely.
Yes.
Did they mention a chorus sample or?
No one has mentioned a chorus sample to me, um.
Now, Eric was actually gonna still do an email, he, I haven't seen that part of it, have you? He was actually gonna say his observations and.
I haven't seen that either.
I need to call him back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess one of us needs to make a note and do that, but, um, that's, that's where we're at. So we did pay them the majority of the, of the payment, so.
Okay.
Um, I was uncomfortable until I talked to Eric and then, uh, Ken and I talked about it again, and then he talked to Eric as well, so I, I think that was probably the right thing to do and go from there, so that's where we're at. I don't really think you have any other old business particularly.
I was gonna say, did you get to see covers, back rack?
That's what I was gonna, you got the rack today, didn't you?
Okay.
I asked about the seat covers, covers the other day too.
So. So Kevin, will you tell me what you got?
What's that?
What the seat covers, can you give me, like, just send me your link to what you bought?
I already sent you the email. Pretty sure I sent it to you after I talked to him, the night, the day after I showed him, I thought I sent you the email. They're like forty-nine ninety-nine, they're off Amazon.
I do not.
If not, I can find it and send it to you.
Just recent.
I'll send it to you tomorrow when I get to work.
Alright.
So the racks cover, we still need the.
Toolboxes.
Toolbox and seat covers, have we looked at toolbox?
No, uh, got lucky and a friend of mine had a rack come in off of a truck at Beckett. And it, it's over twenty-five bucks, I reached three hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, needs modified a little bit, which is nothing, then we'll just paint it black. You know, make it look a lot better, clean that, but nothing wrong with it at all.
Road King's probably the best place to get your toolbox.
Yeah, yeah.
Road King.
They don't have to have one, they probably attract the supply, the next place I'd look.
In Clinton, the Clinton one. The Clinton one.
Yeah, the Clinton one.
Yeah, I used to buy them there.
And the seat covers, so you, you know, it's coming summer, it's gonna get dirty, messy. You want the seat covers in before summer.
We, we put those in, we put the same ones in a Tahoe and we, we like them, they're nice.
Okay, so let me get those ordered.
Figure if you get a year or two out of them, they wear out, you just might as well set.
Yeah.
Well, that, that totally, I, I don't know.
There's four mats in there now.
What you want, what down here, I mean, you want that covered in there too, we can do that too, that's not a big deal.
I just wondered, you know, there is.
It would be nice, drag it muddy now that all the time. Something that will hold it, can just pop out and wash out.
I wonder how much weather tech would be.
Well.
Expensive.
Expensive, Kevin got some nice ones for the Tahoe.
Weather techs for the Tahoe were a hundred and fifty dollars, I bought those star liners, I think.
Yeah.
They were like ninety-two bucks.
It wasn't that much, yeah, we can look at that, why don't you get the other stuff first and I can revisit that.
And a light for, for, you guys want a new light?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get with Kevin, I mean, we're, I don't want a crazy expensive one, but there, there's some really nice.
You gotta be able to get a light for a couple hundred bucks.
Are those on Amazon too?
Uh, well, you can, but we'll get one off of Speed Tech, they're, they're a little bit better light, they're not high dollar like Federal and Wayland like they put in the squad cars, but they're not Amazon Chinese either, they're kinda middle of the road stuff.
Okay.
So what am I allowed to, on the lights, what, what's limit on the?
You had seven hundred and fifty dollars to spend, you've spent seventy-five.
Yeah.
Like I said, when you got offered seventy-five dollars for that rack, I just said, oh, yeah, I only looked at it, I said, oh yeah, we'll take it, cause they're, they're three hundred brand new. Or more.
Well, get your seat covers and then we'll see what's.
Yeah, those are only like fifty bucks plus shipping.
Okay.
Alright, this is old business too, that's Scott Craig's contract. It's pretty much the same as last year, you just need a motion to sign it, if anybody wants to look at the details of it, you guys can.
For the light? For the light? No, there's a, there, it was like a one-size, it's all you buy for a truck.
Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you gonna be off this week sometime?
Okay.
Friday.
It's the same, it's the same scenario, it's, I mean, he is reasonably priced. We get thirty-six hours, so, he did text me back and he said he's not sure about boat in the front yard, he will look that up in eleven minutes.
No marine activity on the street.
So, I think that's the, um,
That was.
End of your old business.
Are those magnetic?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but you can.
Oh yes, that's, that's new business, that's resolution twenty twenty-four dash one, that's just a transfer. Make my negatives positive and like that.
Okay, that's always good.
I've, I've been looking at them.
Okay, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash one, transfer of twenty twenty-three appropriations.
That's probably fourteen inches.
The following transfers here I have attached, Natalie has attached, are necessary to the twenty twenty-two budget appropriations.
We'll just have to get it.
Attached transfers.
We'll figure out what you want, then we'll come in and have her.
I might have caught you last, yeah.
I'm making a motion to approve the transfers.
See, you have to go in.
Just to, it's just so you don't fall for it, cause they just automatically take money.
And then do you want cigarette plugs?
You can be negative in an appropriation, you just, don't wanna be negative in a fund. If you have other money in the fund that can cover that appropriation, that's what it does.
Probably just buy it with the, uh.
Just the cleanup. Somebody make a motion? I'll second, whatever. You're making this second?
Yep.
Should be able to run the wire.
All in favor?
Yes, everyone signs up.
I guess we can talk about the new roof.
Yes, I was gonna say, that is old business too.
That's old business. They came and put a new roof on the garage at the cemetery and one day, it, it looks great.
Yes, it does.
I just told Mike it needs power washed now, so the rest, I want it to look good. Right.
That bill for the roof is on your bills.
Well.
They did not use as much decking as I thought they would, so it was about three hundred dollars less than the original quote, so, I encumbered money from last year's budget that we had set aside for the roof, and then, so I'll pay that out, and so that won't affect, there is part of it's in this year's budget.
So how is everything else out there looking? How is everything else out there looking, is it?
Everything else is pretty good, roof, uh, probably building wise, that was really the only thing that was, other than being washed, the roof, that was it.
Didn't you say there was a tearing in the wall or something?
Yeah, have you noticed that? In the new building, the new shed out there?
The carport.
Yeah.
The carport.
Well, it's a carport.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
There's a rip in the metal. Oh, the roof.
Been out there.
About, oh. It's on the.
Patch it with those extra seams.
On the south side. That roof.
Real quick, while you're on cemetery stuff.
I don't know, has there a limb or something fallen out there?
I don't know, I don't, I don't see it around there. It's on the south side? Trucks have been, the only thing that's been parked in there, on that south end of the, the building.
Well, I.
Oh, I'll look at it.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
It is, it is.
I mean, we're gonna have to replace a panel there, I think, should we call that company and see what we can do?
I think we better look at it and see what we got, Ken, can you look at it too?
Yeah, yeah. Kevin, you were starting to say something about cemetery.
Natalie sent me a picture today of a headstone.
Yes.
That was, uh, spray painted and just found. I sent that picture to Lexi Worth, who is probation officer. One of the two boys that I caught got sentenced Monday. Um, the other one has court next Monday, so I need a quick guesstimate on what it would take to clean that and try to get it to her. She's gonna see if that can be added to the restitution that these boys have been ordered to pay.
Yeah, Tom, Chris and Mary, I don't know his last name, but he's married to Jerry Brown, Tom brought that in today, that's the first I've seen that headstone.
Right, and.
Where's that? It's right there by the trash, I've been out there and I've not seen it.
It's, it's in the back.
Yeah.
Cause you can see the bean field behind it.
Yeah, I, we've been out there several times.
Yeah, it was red, it's red.
It's absolutely the same color, you wanna see about fifteen pictures I got of it?
It's almost fuchsia and.
Well, it's been, what, two months since it was done?
Well, that was November.
Yeah, it's been three months, it's been rained on and everything else.
Well, there's a sign.
I don't even know how to get a, I don't know how to estimate that.
Well, there's a sign, somebody that cleans headstones, I'll go get that number. Well, there's a sign, somebody that cleans headstones, I'll go get that number.
Well, the problem is that headstone's about a hundred and fourteen years old.
Well, and that's what.
So you gotta be careful.
Specialize in, is if they're a headstone cleaner, they're using a special solvent or just soft brushes.
I told Lexi I would try to talk, I would talk to you to the board tonight and see if we could get something together tomorrow and then I will give her a call. She said if she she can go back to the court and possibly have it added back into their.
Right.
Their deal, because they are being ordered to pay restitution. And I know they're being put on probation, I don't know what the details of their probation are just yet, but.
Um, in the morning, I will give Steve at Wabash Valley Monument a call. He does a lot of monuments out of the cemetery, he's a very, very nice guy and I think he'll probably have some insight. I'll see what he has to say.
Sign out there, but close door, he is.
Yeah, but I'll call Steve in the morning.
They clean.
Yeah, super nice guy.
I know the solvent that I bought that time was kind of pricey.
So I think, are we on new business?
We are. Okay, we are currently on new business. And we were talking about the cemetery roof, that actually went back to old business.
Yeah.
And then the carport hole is new business and this graffiti at the cemetery is also somewhat new business.
Now, back by the trash pile at the cemetery, I don't know if you guys have paid attention to that big tree back there, it's been stripped by lightning. I think I showed it to you. It's probably gonna die. Cause it's burnt from the top all the way down to the bottom.
Yeah, I noticed that.
It is a big.
The one that's right there by the burn pile.
Was hit by lightning or something, he could sit at the top where it just scorched.
Yeah, we probably, if it's, I have to have that taken out, if it's.
I can take that down if you want me to.
That big oak tree?
Yeah, it's just a tree.
Well, how are you gonna take it?
Chain's all. It's already leaning that way anyway.
You're gonna just drop it in the burn pile?
Drop it right there, yeah, it dropping away from everything, you know, towards people.
I don't know, we probably need to get somebody that's insured. Got you insured.
I mean, I don't know what kind of tree, I don't know, I haven't seen the tree, so. I don't know, yeah, it'll cost at least three to five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So.
You know, when I go look at that roof, I could take my one boy, that's all he does is tree cutting, so I can have him look at it just to see if. If it is gonna die or just whatever.
That sounds wonderful.
Yes. Okay, so you are, you're, now you're in new business. In new business, you can handle this.
Okay.
If you guys are ready to do that, which I think you were.
You're right.
Um.
So everybody knows we have a, um, empty spot on the town board. And we've had two, um, people express interest in. Joining us and, um.
I mean, you can, yeah, you can say their names and then you guys can go from there.
And we, um, looked over the letters, one was from Ethan Kaplinger. And the other is from Tony McLean. And, um.
You can ask.
Discussed it in the execution session and.
Um, you can just ask if anybody wants to nominate one of those.
Okay, is it, is everybody ready to, um, decide or nominate somebody for this position?
I'll nominate Anthony McLean, Tony.
That's your first.
Do you want a second?
Yeah.
And Barb, would you like to notify?
You need to take a vote.
Oh, we have to take a vote?
You gotta take a vote.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Alright.
And then, yes, Barb can.
I know. I need three. I've never been tricked. Barb, would you like to do that?
Notifying, yes, if I can find your home, I I'll do that.
My walk-in gym.
Shoot him a call.
If you talk to him, tell him to, um, give me a holler in here and then I can slary him in and. Get that filed with the courthouse and then we can get him started.
I think we all have a copy of that already.
What's this?
Yeah, we don't.
Everybody has a copy of it, yeah.
It's in your copy.
Yeah.
Another thing with Tony, he's been a lifelong resident at Rosedale, so, you know.
Okay.
In another new business.
I I have some, I have some new business.
Okay.
Um, I would like to have some doors that function.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, doors that function.
I'm not, I don't know, Ken, you're the construction guy. I've priced out double doors, I don't know if there's a better replacement, I don't, I don't know, but I cannot. You don't know how many people all day long like go and yank on it and can't get it open. And it's, the pain is peeling, we obviously need a new door. I don't know what to look at to buy, I mean, I do know what to look at to buy, like for more double door sets, do I need a full set, I don't know. Do we have to hire someone to put all this in? I I just need a new gosh dang functioning door.
I will take a peek and then buy it.
So, I mean, I'll.
Didn't you have some pictures or something?
I I mean, I looked at some double door sets, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we want something with a window in it, I don't know that that's. On a security end, the best thing to do, do we, I don't know. So I guess I need some help with the decision on what the right thing to replace it is with. But, I mean, everyone that's worked in the last, as long as I've been here, has adjusted the hinges. Tried to shave it down, tried to fit, and it's just.
And I've already scraped and painted it twice, I'm not doing it again.
Need new door. It's easy, that's that's all I got there, um. That's all the new business I have, cause what else I have is can be done under, um, or. Under department.
So I don't know, so one thing that I got, I don't know if this is now or under, under or a different, you know, the water sewer. But Amy Harney, her water froze in her pipes. Of course, I, I mean, they froze, basically the whole house, so I think you went down, shut the water off, I went down, fixed. Couple leaks and then you turn it back on. And it was under the house and it was the main that was broke. And, yeah, uh, I don't know how long that main was, uh, broke underneath, I I know it was here recently, but. Quite a bit of water came through, so anyway, so I fixed it and I actually did turn it on yesterday, it was half on when I got there. Cause she had another one in her shower bust. So, yeah, so I literally.
Not have her heat on at all?
It did get shut off and that's what caused the problem. When I say shut off, it's.
She's living with her mom.
She's staying with her mom right now for medical reasons and stuff like that, so that thing froze, so anyway, so last night it was half on, so I don't know who. Okay, so I turned it on last night just to see where the other freaking leaks were, I think I left it on last night, I. I didn't go back and check, I was thinking about it driving today, so I think it's on right now, but anyway, um.
You want me to go shut it off?
Yeah, it's up to you guys, so I think. Yeah. Yeah, well, she's good now, I think she's, but we were talking about, she was gonna try to come to the meeting tonight to see about getting the water adjustment for all the water. I haven't seen the bill, I haven't, I don't know if she contacted, she talked about calling you.
We have a pretty good stack of adjustments to do. From broken pipes from that cold snap. I don't know.
Changed at least six lines in hers. So, hers really froze.
I have her in my file already, but, um. I don't, I try to do them all at one time, because it's just, when you're in the system, it's just as easy versus going and doing them individually. Um, I'm gonna guess that. Based upon what you told me, the next bill she generates might be a little bigger than this one. Her consumption last month was only thirty-nine hundred gallons, which is really, that's high for her. But that's not unusually high, but if she's had a main underneath there leaking. Then she's probably gonna be a lot higher next month.
Well, I guarantee you after the last week.
Because this.
A lot of water came up yesterday.
This bill's actually not that high for her, so we may, we may just wanna hold off and make her adjust on her next bill. We'll read again on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. If you're okay with it, we can leave it on, cause she's ready to use it now, cause I think she was talking about. What's that?
Do you want it off or on?
Well, it don't matter to me at all. Well, she does now. Oh, yeah, yeah, that got corrected a month ago, you know, something in there. And I just never did do anything with the line, she was waiting for it to get warmer, she was with her mom, so I didn't wanna get in the middle of all that, you know, so they finally called me last week. That's when I went through, just one leak after the other. Every time I turned it on, another one. That was bad. Yeah, that one was, that one was really poor, that whole line was busted, I mean, straight off, it was just.
Wasn't there somebody else that had a leak too?
There was several.
Oh, we had, we had several, and then we had, I mean, yeah, we had several, so like I said, we have a pretty good stack over there.
And I've been in a lot of crawl spaces in my life and that's a very tight one in that house.
She came in and talked to me too, Ken, and she said.
Okay, she said she was going to, but I don't know if she did or not, so.
Yeah, she she came in, so.
So we're on the department's right?
Oh, here's your water report.
Okay.
Her department report.
Alright.
Oh, I have a question before you do that.
Okay.
Last Thursday, yeah, last Thursday. Um, we had that burial back there in the snow plot, I thought that was supposed to be on Friday.
No, it was on Thursday and it was on your sheet on Thursday and we talked about it and it was on Thursday.
They said it was a week later, so I took it as Friday then.
No.
It was, there was no, there was no problem, we were right there. We were here, right here when they called, and that's my fault, I'm not perfect.
Okay, water sewage, eighty-five penalties.
We made phone calls.
Chin calls.
We actually did a pretty good collection.
Tags.
Um.
No shut offs?
No shut offs. We, um, we don't really like shutting off that time of year. I don't know if I mentioned this last month or not, but we got a nice influx of money from, um. The water assistance program, we have in COVID money. Community actions never really helped with water or wastewater, but they had some COVID money and they started, they did a program in twenty-two and twenty-three and they helped people. And then they needed to get rid of that money and not carry it over, so everyone that had received in the last two years got a set amount. So several people in town got a set amount, which helped them out throughout the winter months and whatnot, so that was kinda nice, um. We did, I did have Andrea, speaking of leak adjustments, I was kinda curious, last year, we did make. Throughout the whole year, we made eighteen bill adjustments for leaks. And then, um, we made five adjustments for like penalties or reading errors, but. I just thought that was kind of an interesting little.
Were you thinking it's high or lower?
I I don't, I think it's probably pretty fair, I think that. I mean, some people don't pursue a leak adjustment after we tell them, they don't, they just say it's fine, no big deal, but, you know, some people. Really, really want that leak adjustment, but we really do try to do a good job if we notice and say, call people and say, hey, we think you have a leak, if we can't get ahold of someone. We have hung tags before too, so we we do really try to do a good job of being fair, cause it does stink, so. Um, the only other thing I wanna bring up in water is. We need a new meter for the school, it's one of our non-reading meters, it's probably. One of the biggest pains to read the school, the lid is really heavy and whatnot, um. So Matt Kingery has provided a quote for that meter, a regular meter is about three hundred and fifty dollars a meter. For the two inch for the school is one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
It's a high velocity.
Yes, and, um. The only other problem is, all of the meters are getting new composite lids because of the cellular reading signal. Um, doesn't go through the metal, so Matt is having trouble locating a lid. A composite lid for that, so he did say we will probably have to do, um, some kind of an other way to read it, like a. Some kind of a pipe that has a reader on the top of that, we'll have to maybe reroute the reader, he's supposed to come by and take a look.
Where's it at? Is it by the sign out front?
No, no, it's whenever he did, they moved it down in front of the closest part of the building to the road.
Preschool area?
Yeah, yeah, like the kindergarten right there.
So I'll have to do something else probably on the reader part.
I just didn't know.
With that being said, and you can't find one, you could have somebody like John Bennett. He has a little hole in there and do it all, just so that thing will fit right in.
Yeah, and that's what Matt said, Matt said something can be done, but he's supposed to. Take a look at it and that kinda stuff, either way, to figure out how we need to do it, but in the meantime.
He can do it.
The, um.
Oh, yeah, I'm just thinking if something's stuck up, especially in that part of it, would somebody break it, kick it? Oh, yeah, him, he could, I was just talking about this other option.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want.
To me, just being, the amount of activity I'm on that side of the building.
Right, that's what he said he wanted to come and look at it before he really made a recommendation, all we should do.
Cause I'm, I'm across the road right there with my boys quite a bit and there's a lot of activity in that area, so.
So I would just need a motion to go ahead and order this and get it on the way, and then next month, we need to start ordering meters. They are a few months out, so we definitely are gonna need to order some more, um. We've replaced about fifty at this point in time, we are reading manually. Last manual reading month was a, there was so much standing water, I think that some of those will read. Um. We're, I mean, we're still manually reading about forty meters, but three hundred and twenty are reading. So we have to be positive on this.
It also, I'm gonna take the old truck too, cause it's something. I just don't think it's getting a good enough ground until we get that rack on the new to.
Yeah.
To read, so I'm gonna use your old truck.
Yeah.
That way we'll know.
Yeah, they were all in the water.
Every time we go to read, it rains.
So we have some here, we still have six or seven in here too, one of them we have stepped out, for one of them we need to replace. Um, and there's a meter issue, so I didn't, I didn't find anything that covered this in any of our ordinances and. As long as I've been in the office, I haven't experienced this, but we have a customer up on the hill and, um, you're not supposed to be in your meter pit. You're not supposed to, you're not supposed to be in your meter pit and.
Supposed to what?
Not supposed to be inside your meter pit.
Not supposed to open it.
You're not supposed to open your lids, well, during that cold snap, um, I think the outside hydrant froze. And then I do believe they got in the pit and now the meter is cracked and it's leaking at the meter. Um, he did call and talk to me about it, I had Gary go by there and look at it. Um, Gary said that when he got there, the lid was partially off. And he said that the meter's far enough down that it wouldn't have frozen if the lid had been on it. So I don't know if it's an option to ask a customer if we believe they tampered with that to pay for that meter. I mean, I don't, I don't know, someone feel me out on this, I.
I mean, if.
I don't know, it was reading fine before, it was fine, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not trying to be a jerk to anybody, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something, I mean, people are supposed to not be in their their meter pits.
Call or anything?
He he called and talked to me about it, um.
After you.
Yeah, and he said, I do think maybe the meter is leaking, um.
So he knew it was leaking because he was in there?
Well, right, yes, yeah, so.
So, yeah, we know he was in there.
And it's, and the water's, yeah, so.
We can't prove it was leaking.
We we, uh, we can't really prove that was like tampered with, I guess, in a sense, but.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know, I guess it's something we've never really, bridge we've really crossed and. Maybe I say it out loud and somebody will think, maybe we need to make sure we have a provision in there, if we feel like. We've come to your house, checked your meter and your lids off and something's broken, then you're responsible, I don't know.
There's another ordinance.
Yeah, something to examine, I don't know.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we probably need to.
That water was crystal clear. And all the other, all the other ones were dirty.
Right.
I I I read it by just looking down in the pit, it was that clear. He was coming right at there. Didn't have a chance to get dirty in there.
Well, I'm just thinking, I, you know, I got that property behind my house and it's got a meter right there in between the trees. If I hit it just right with a mower or if the neighbors are turning around, I mean, it pops it off and. I'm just thinking, you know, that case, I'm just putting myself in that shoes, you know, I'm never in that freaking pit. But I'm always closing it, you know, it's, when I say always, I mean, it may be once a year, but I'm just thinking of that. I don't know who this person is or what their scenario is, but like the one I got, it's like that high above the ground and. You know, so I know some of them are below the ground, my house is below the. But like, the one I got, it's like that high above the ground, and, you know, so I know some of them are below the ground. My house is below the ground.
Yeah, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, there are different scenarios, yeah. But you guys can make a motion on that.
Nobody's been in that pit for, I know, five years.
All in favor?
Go to school thing.
Yeah, you come off my steps. And halfway between the end step and the fence, turn to the left, you'll.
Potentially, maybe like.
Right there where the fence is, you know, the fence makes a curve. Because the reason I had to put a sidewalk.
I don't think that we should.
So, just kinda envision where the sidewalk will go. I didn't wanna put a freaking thing right in the middle of the sidewalk, you know?
Hey, we're not gonna bear any penalties on until Monday, you know? It's, it's weird, but it does, you can decrease your penalties by, by twenty or thirty people pretty quickly.
I mean, hell, I could dig it up tomorrow. Means, like I said, I know exactly.
Alright, that's all I had on water. I haven't heard from Rob, so I don't think there's any waste or issues.
Okay, street.
Man, nothing that we haven't talked about, other, I don't know if you have anything, but now.
Probably could grate some alleys maybe, and a cemetery probably. Why not?
Cause Tony told me it was too cold.
Who?
It said warm.
Yeah, we missed your opening there, um, warm park, any?
I haven't seen any damage, just, uh, Mike just said they were kicking the trash barrel over. Were they older kids or younger kids or what?
They were just older kids. They weren't young kids.
Any other damage over there? Calm down some.
I don't think so. Well, it's cold, little kids can't be out here anymore.
Can I say something on the street department? I'm sorry, I just looked at my list. Um, I had somebody call from town, and she said she thought this would be a neat idea. She said she knows it would probably be expensive, she doesn't know, but she said, you know how you go to those towns, Natalie, and you, and all their street signs have like a. School mascot on it, and I, I think Danville, Indiana has some signs that have something. And she's like, could we do some really neat street signs just to dress the place up, and maybe put the hotshot symbol or something on it? She's like, you know, the schools we all, all we have left. And I said, that's kind of an interesting idea. I said, I think we need to do some sign work in town.
Yeah, we definitely need to do sign work first.
But she did mention that, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, it'd be kinda cool, and I know what she's talking about, I've seen them.
Yeah, Georgetown, Illinois got them.
Do they have them?
Yeah, Danville.
They are neat, I don't know, I'm sure they're pretty costly.
Like Georgetown's got every size.
But, I mean, they are kinda cool, but we do need to do some street sign work, but, I don't know, it might be something to consider if we could figure out, you know. How to do it and whatnot. So that's all, that's kind of street department thing for me, so.
Fire had eight total runs, six medical, zero fire, one car accident, one tree in the road.
And two fires within four days this week.
Where was the first one?
Both were.
First one was out at Addington's, Old Oaks Road.
Both mobile homes.
Oh, that's right, and then this one over here.
And then it went up to the top of the hill.
What is it?
It's a house.
It is? I always thought it was a tree.
Oh, no, it's a house.
Oh, it was a house.
Up here? Yeah, it's a house.
Elizabeth's house.
Oh, yeah.
Still hers, but.
No, not anymore.
Breakfast Sunday.
Breakfast Sunday.
Miss Sunday.
Cemetery is one burial, one cremation.
Please have two tickets for warnings. Very talk about properties.
Kevin did provide a big listing of all their runs last year.
Yeah, I was able, they finally got the CAD where we could get into it about, not a couple weeks ago, but I finally get into it. The, uh, all the uniforms were ordered. I was gonna wear mine tonight, except when I went to get them. We were short two long sleeve shirts, which were mine, so. I'm waiting on long sleeve shirts, one pair of pants for myself, and then one shirt for Numa, but everything else is in. She sent me a text yesterday, everything ought to be in by middle of late next week, so I went ahead and paid her, cause that check was written.
The end of December.
End of December, so I didn't want that hanging out there too much longer for you, so that stuff's all paid for.
Natalie, you ready for your?
I am, um, I did put a flyer in everybody's thing, um, it's an event by the Community Foundation. And, um, Partnership Park County, they're doing some community input sessions. I did offer up the town hall for it next Tuesday night. They are trying to get a grant through Lily. It's a, it's a community type grant, and they're looking for different ideas from communities on things that would be good for grant funding. It's a little different than the ready grants that Park County's gotten. Honestly, I feel like we're rarely kind of included, so I'd love to see some interaction, I'll see if I can round up some people to come and maybe share some ideas and things.
Any mural grant?
It might be a good verification mural type grant. I don't know, it's a, it's a large grant that they're trying to partner with the Park County. I did go to the Partnership Park County dinner. Trying to be better about things like that. They had it here at the nineteen-hundred building in Rosedale. I did pick up their impact report, if anybody has any interest to look and see what Partnership Park County's done in the last ten years. There is their report. It was a nice dinner, it was a nice event. So maybe somebody, if you're free next Tuesday, can stop in, and Cindy will be here. And whatnot.
Hey, one more thing on the police stuff. Michael's been trying to look into grants for those flashing and stop signs.
That's what you said, yeah.
Everything he gets into, he runs into roadblocks, cause they all want big fancy traffic studies done, how many accidents, this, that. So that's going to be kind of a tough one to pull off. Those would be nice to have, but I don't know, they're fifteen, two thousand dollars apiece, and you need four of them, so.
I did go to, um, the newly elected officials for Predator School and whatnot, and then that was with Randy Asher in Rockville. In January, um. We learned a little bit of some ways that they're doing things. We did get a little bit of insight from the comptroller's office on. What we've been wanting, like knowing when we're supposed to get which kind of revenue, so that's, um, pretty helpful. I'm working on my annual financial report right now. There is a place where, um, Carol, you'll have to come in and go through it with me. And you will sign off on that online when I'm ready to file, which I'm getting close. I had a patron in here today, and I hope I didn't talk out of turn with her. She lives on Main Street now. They have a sidewalk in front of their house that's lifted up from some tree roots. He's a construction guy. She said that they would like to replace it. I know, Ken, you put a new sidewalk in front of your house at one point in time. I told her that I don't think that you guys would have any issue with them replacing that section of sidewalk. As long as it left the same footprint and matched up with the other sidewalk, and then I even went as far as to say that Mike and Cliff could pop the old sidewalk out.
There you go.
I mean. That was part of the discussion that we could take it out for someone, yeah. So I did talk to someone about that today, and she said, okay.
Whatever town ordinance or whatever. I'm just going back, I don't know if it's changed.
Along Oak Street there, and Town Board told me that, no, I couldn't do that, and because it's, yeah, but this was a long time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it changed, because they were.
They would not be good, they would not be good.
So the ordinance that you're talking about, Ken, is, I was on the council too, but I think that we actually did away with that.
So I don't know, it's been a long time.
I think that we talked about that ordinance, and then we were worried about margin of error, and. And I think, well.
Well, it had to do with the town guys had to actually pour it, and I was like, he ain't touching the sidewalk.
Want to pour it, and I think that we kinda did away with it at that point in time. But I felt like, I, when I talked to her today, I'm like, well, if they're willing to pour it and pay for that. I don't see why we wouldn't be willing to go and pop it out for them, and, and do that part, so. So I, I did tell her that I thought that was fine today, so.
I went into was, they told me that I was still liable if anybody tripped on the pot, cause the roots went out and lifted it up like she's talking about. Was liable if somebody tripped on it. And my crack was, was then why can't I replace it? And they said, no, no, we wanna, you know, da-da-da, this. Now I got a perfect sidewalk.
But yeah, that's all I got.
I sense that's what happened to mine. Big, I mean, that had a monster tree out there, and. An actual kid jumped it on a bicycle and ran into the house.
So when the weather gets better, I think it'd be awesome if we could start going around and maybe marking out some sections and figuring out what it would cost, and try to, we have. ARP money we can still spend, we have edit money we can put aside for that. I mean, we have some pots of money, and I think sidewalks would be a really nice addition. Especially with the walking trail, especially maybe focusing on down here, going from that trail to this trail.
Potentially, just uncovering, cause I mean.
Some of the uncovering is huge, um, for sure, so.
Don't forget windows.
Yeah, you'd want some windows at the police station, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Get rid of that single pane glass over there. I mean, do we ever, again, it's been a long time since I've dealt with any of this, but, I mean, do we still, like kids that need to do community service? Like having them, just having these guys just take them down and clean sidewalks?
So, yeah, we can do that, um, the problem with juveniles and community service is a lot of them have to have it on the weekends. Cause of school, um.
They have to be supervised.
And they do have to be supervised, so we've used them for Strawberry Festival the last couple of years. But we still do get calls for other community service workers. We are on the list at Rockville. And so I think that's a fine.
Yeah, they could just start cleaning sidewalks, we can just throw a dump truck next to them and.
Right, absolutely. I think that, I think that's a great starting point. There are sidewalks that can be uncovered in town, we can see what's there.
I mean, there's a lot just on this street here, down towards my house, that whole other side.
And would, if we knew we were gonna do that, it would be really smart to go through and spray the weeds on them. First, and then let them die a little.
I think all the sidewalks need to be looked at, just like you said, I mean, clean them up, clean the sidewalks up.
Depending on Monday's courting, court up, there might be two that need some community hours.
Yes, I would say they're probably gonna need some community hours for sure, yeah, so.
Well, even in the summertime, schools.
But in the summertime, that would be an excellent resource for them, yes, so. I do think that we can make an effort on our end.
That's what I'm saying, I think we can make an effort.
Take a look at those houses, I mean, they're not getting any better.
Yeah, I think we can definitely, I mean, there's a lot we can do, I think that we just have to. This, this office is getting a cleanup like ridiculously at the end of this week. It's a dumping ground of disgusting, so. I'm gonna get back to my painting project, and get the bathrooms painted out. I don't like this color anymore, I'm gonna do that. Time to clean up. We got our light fixed out front. I think so, yeah. Yeah, but yeah, the doors, I really, really would love if we could figure out some doors.
I would think all glass would look neat, but it's probably safety wise, it's not.
Ken's got, we got a couple big old steel school doors sitting around, though.
I just, I just want something that's functional, that people can get in and out of, and so, there are people that walk away all day long. That come up and yank on it and then walk away, and sometimes I chase them, and sometimes I don't. You could only do so much, but.
Well, I have to use my hip to get it open. What about a lighted sign out front?
You ever think that?
We have an awning now, it looks wonderful.
No, you want to put it there.
For not a tavern.
Alright, that's all I have, I'm good. Everybody sign the bills, give me the bills.
I haven't looked at it.
Cody made the motion. Who's the motion to adjourn?
I guess me.
Or did Carol just make it?
She dropped the gavel, it's over.
Who's the second? Barb's the second.
We'll, we'll just beg Barb's second.